Right, the Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Cohn. Alderman Norrion.
Here.
Alderman Vommer.
Present.
Alderwoman Valesquez.
Present.
Alderwoman Saye. Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Browning.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Present.
President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Present.
Alderman Cohn.
Present.
Alderwoman Saye. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. We have twelve present, you have a quorum.
A quorum being present, we will dispense with line items three and four. Introduction of honored guests, are there any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the eleven.
Good morning, Madam President, I thank the members of the board. My honored guest today is my daughter-in-law who is celebrating a birthday and she was just the gift that I needed about five years ago. Having had four boys, to finally have a daughter is truly a wonderful gift. So happy birthday, Kyandria.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from Friday, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Board of Aldermen meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we approve the minutes from Friday, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Google Drive for your review.
Alderman from the second, you are recognized on the suspension of the rules for the introduction of the Holly Hills Special Business District Board members.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing the mayor's appointments to the St. Louis Hills Special Business District.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the second, seconded by the Alderman from the fourth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing the Holly Hills SBD Board members. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Norrion.
Aye.
Alderman Vommer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Valesquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Saye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I got you. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Okay. Alder, Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. We have fourteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion for the purposes of the introduction of the Board members for the Holly Hills SBD.
Perfect, thank you, Madam President, I now move that we accept the appointments or adopt the appointments of the mayor's, the mayor's appointments to the St. Louis Hills Business District.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the second, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we adopt the mayor's appointments to the Holly Hills Special Business District, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Honorable Members of the Board of Aldermen, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for the appointment to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission. The reappointment of Neil Perryman, who resides in the second ward, serving as a non-voting member, whose terms expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. The reappointment of Dr. Will Ross, who resides in the ninth ward, serving as a member whose term expired December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Alderman from the second, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment to the Zoological Park Sub-District.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I move, we adopt the mayor's appointments to the zoo sub-district.
I see the Alderwoman from the thirteenth has her hand raised, Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
I'm, I'm just questioning, we previously had it where people that would be reappointed or appointed to these commissions would be vetted through the committee, so we're not doing that anymore?
It is up to the alderperson who is sponsoring to decide whether they would like to send it to committee or pass it on the floor of the board.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that if it's an inquiry of me.
Go right ahead.
Sure. Alderwoman, thanks, the, these are reappointments, and I, I can speak for Mr. Perryman for sure as a reappointment here, he's, he's been on that, on that board in a previous capacity, he also is a, a very civic-minded individual that is a second ward constituent, he's involved in the Nanjing Sister City of China Committee that St. Louis has and has done thankless work associated with that. So I have no issue with him, he's been vetted by the mayor's park office, he's a downtown lawyer in St. Louis that maintains a downtown presence, is a downtown booster. So there's a, there's a broad experience being brought by that individual, so I, I didn't see a need to, to go to committee for a further vet.
I guess my concern is, how would residents know this commission had positions that were open? And I'm seeing somebody from the ninth ward and the second ward, so it was no other wards that came after this, how was this advertised for people to know that this position, these physicians were open? And so, too, these two people have been sitting on this commission for how long?
I, I'm not sure, I can't speak to the, the resident of the ninth ward, but I, I know that the, Mr. Perryman has served a, a previous term, one previous term is, is what I, is what I recall.
Okay, I'm, I'm just hesitant because from way back when I first got elected, that was a big issue with me, because I continuously kept asking for these commissions and boards and what, where the positions open was, and it was very hectic to get that information, then when I finally got it, then they wanted us to scramble to try to get the information out, and so I'm just pushing because in our community in the north quarter, a lot of those people don't even know these physicians are available and how we can bring new people to the, to that, to those commissions. And then part of the thirteenth ward, we are looking at with the county to bring the zoo over in that area, and so I just think it's not, it's, to me, it's, I'm not comfortable with pushing for some people that are already there, and they're not looking at the people that's in those areas that can be afforded it, so that's just where I'm at.
Yeah. Alderwoman, I, I'm certainly open to, to continuing that conversation, I mean, by, by all means, if, I, I, look, I want, I want broad representation on all these committees, I will tell you that I don't think it's a secret that it's very hard to fill these posts in a lot of capacities. I know that there, there's a perpetual open application process, and there's a link that, that anyone can go to on the City Hall's website and apply and see the various open positions, I do know that exists, but I would agree with you that we probably all need to, all need to do a better job of reminding our constituents that that exists and that, that, that link is there and available for anyone interested to, to apply, and I think it's incumbent on us as, as elected officials to push that and get our citizenry more involved. I would just ask for a quick nomination and adoption of, of these two folks today, and then know that that can be an ongoing conversation, because, because I do hear you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Oldenburg.
You bet, Alderwoman, thank you.
I move to adopt, if that's the appropriate move right now.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would second the concern of the Alderwoman from the thirteenth, and I would disagree with the Alderman from the second, third?
Second, you got it.
Second, okay, you, you're still gonna be for a long time the sixteenth with me, okay? But, okay, it is not hard. On many occasions, we have sent people to the mayor's office from the north quarter that will not be accepted, and it's not because they're not qualified. It is an ongoing conversation that's been going on for a lot of years, and she picks and chooses who she'll put on certain committees. And when you're leaving a whole part of the city off that's racist, that's prejudicial, that is against the ordinance that says you're supposed to have people across the whole spectrum. And so each time when this is brought up, and the Alderwoman from the thirteenth is correct in saying that we did say we're, from now on, we're gonna send it back to committee, is because each time it is brought up, the people who are getting their person, they all of a sudden don't wanna talk about the, is it a fair board, does the board reflect the city of St. Louis, then they just want who they want. And so if you send it to committee, one of the first questions should be, where are the other members coming from? And is this is a board that's reflective only of one part of the city? That is not what it should be, and that is a valid concern, and I disagree holistically. That is hard to find, each time when the mayor, few little times when she did listen, and we sent her people, they were good people. Okay, and I could send her people all the time, but she doesn't want that part, she doesn't want North St. Louis to be represented. And when you're reappointing the people that Francis Slate did, you're really carrying on the tradition of, of racism and omitting a part of the city. When Lita Cruisen was the mayor, I raised that issue so much that they put a book together, which I can share with you, and guess what? The issue that I've been talking about was proven to be true, Timothy O'Connell had just left our office and went to work for Lita and put the book together, and it's very simple. You're not appointing people from all parts of the city. And that did not happen before Francis, I've been here long enough to know. I've been here since ninety-one, and so Vince Shaima would call you and, and tell you, hey, we need to get some people from all parts of the city. Freeman Clarence did that, but once Francis got to be the mayor, he left out the city, so when you're reappointing the things that people did wrong, then you're continuing the tradition of leaving people who live north of Page out of the conversation. Then we're having these, these boards and commissions that are important, and there's nobody from our part of town being representing. Look at the Board of Adjustment, it's an embarrassment, they make all these decisions that are bad for North St. Louis, and we have no representation. We have nobody to say that's wrong, so when people say it's so hard, it's not, and a lot of these boards and commissions don't take speciality. It's supposed to be citizens from.
There's been a point of order, Alderman from the ninth, could you state your point of order?
I believe we're discussing the nomination of Will Ross, and I don't think we need to be talking about the Board of Adjustment in this debate.
It's sustained, Alderwoman, please keep your comments germane to the issue in front of.
No, I was not discussing just them, I was discussing the general nature of why the Alderwoman from the thirteenth said, I thought we were gonna send these so that we could have, and they already spoke to it about the diversity and having people from all across the city. So that is what we have been saying for years, and now we're not doing that, and then they say, well, we're only talking about these two. That, you can't talk about these two in a silo without talking about, we have an ordinance that says it's supposed to be so that people from all across the city are appointed, so, and then let me just point out to you, Madam President, then you should have told, that point of order should have been when they brought up across the city, then you should have said, don't bring that up. Once you bring it up, and then somebody gonna say, point of order, that's like having a prosecution without a defense. I get to reply to what they say, the defense is, the prosecution is not valid if you say we can't find people to go into these positions, we absolutely can, and we can find them all across the, the, the city, and we can find them in North St. Louis, so the people who don't want them, like the mayor, because she's making it very clear, don't act like, oh, it's because we can't find anybody, that's what people say all the time about black people. We can't find any qualified black people, yes, you can, you can find them, and if you got a person who's looking for them, and they're not finding them, they need to be fired. So to just say, oh, we're just talking about the ninth, and we're talking about the second, and we're not somehow talking about this whole city, and this is not a, a commission or a board that represents just a part of the city, because those I'm fine with, we said we were gonna be fine with it, that we just vote those through, but when you try to take them solely without looking at holistically what that committee looks like, then you're purposely not vetting and not following the ordinances, which we put up our little hands and said, we will follow the ordinances that are in place, and the ordinance that's in place says that you have to have, if a mayor points more than three people to a committee, a board, or commission, that it's supposed to be so that the whole city is represented, that wasn't passed by me, that's been in place for years and years and years, and it only started to be violated in two thousand and one when Francis Slate became the mayor, and for the mayor then, the current mayor, to be going ahead and doing the same thing is ridiculous. I will give it to the previous mayor, Lita Cruisen, when she saw it, she started to work with the caucus, and we started to get some different people, and this mayor is hell bent on that she's not gonna have diversity, and I don't care if you put all North St. Louis people and all south, and South St. Louis people are left out, that's not fair either, if you live out, leave out a part of the city that's not represented, that is not fair, and that is not the whole city. And so I will not be voting yes on either of these nominations if we're not gonna send it to committee, and we're not gonna do our job to vet to make sure that our laws are being followed. Thank you.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, I was raising my hand to make a different motion, so we, I move to appoint Neil Perryman and to confirm the appointment of Neil Perryman and Will Ross.
That motion is already on the table, the, the motion, though, my understanding is that you have an additional appointment that needs to be made to the board.
Ah, yes, is that the appropriate time to do this?
So if you would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to introduce that person, we can then approve all three of the nominees together.
Point of order, point of order.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
She cannot suspend the rules in the middle of some ongoing motion that's already on the table, you can do that afterwards, and also we were in discussion.
Okay, we'll vote on, on these two, and then we'll go back and we'll take this one up, Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Madam President, yeah, I, I agree that, you know, we can't, we can't suspend the rules in the middle of debate on a, a motion pending before us, but I had my hand up originally. The, the conversation, at least that I, as I understand it to be, is that, you know, we, we have in the past started to refer appointments to citywide boards and commissions to committee to review credentials to ensure that we're in compliance with diversity and requirements, not just racially, ethnically, from a gender perspective, but also geographically, the Alderwoman from the twelfth ward and I have, you know, very much been in agreement on that in the past for citywide boards, this is a neighborhood-based board. This, it's a neighborhood special business district, it's like a neighborhood community improvement district, you know, oftentimes there are geographic restrictions that, you know, limit people's participation in this, they either have to be a property owner, a business owner, or a resident within those geographies, it's a completely different conversation, it would be like me saying that the, you know, special business district for Procter and Gamble up in, you know, the.
I do wanna make sure that you recognize that we are discussing the Zoological Park appointments, not the Holly Hills SBD appointments.
Oh, nope, sorry, I didn't catch that, I thought we were still in the Holly Hills, but I mean, in that case, then, you know, I, I would agree that this would need to go over to the appropriate committee for additional review.
Alderman from the second, do you wanna proceed or send to committee?
I mean, I, I would love for us to proceed, I, I hear this conversation, I just, I know the zoo has been waiting seven months for these appointments, these are, these are reappointments. I know that the zoo is committed to working closely with Michael Moore, the new Board and Commission representative for, for the city, and I know that, that this is an important conversation. I know both of these appointments are also very involved with the Wild Care Center that the Alderwoman from the thirteenth referenced, so I would like to renew my motion at this time.
Alderwoman from the twelfth, actually, I'm gonna recognize the Alderwoman from the eighth first because she has not spoken yet.
Thank you, Madam President, I, I just had a question for the Alderman from the second, if he would yield.
Would the Alderman from the second yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the eighth? You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, Alderman, I was just curious, I know we have a lot of folks serving an expired terms on a lot of different commissions, and it's my understanding they can continue to serve in that capacity, even in an inspired, in an expired term. Are these two appointments able to continue to serve? You know, if, because we are sitting here looking at a break, and you know, you point out that the zoo is looking to fill those positions, could they continue to serve in an expired sense through the summer? If that, if, if there was a delay?
I don't know the answer to that, Alderwoman, I don't.
I'm sensitive to making sure that they can continue to function, but I think that there's been some good points raised, and I was just curious if there was a way to kind of meet in the middle here and find a path to have a conversation, but continue to allow them to, to, to serve.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think that's probably correct, they can continue to serve, so I mean, having that said, if, if, if that seems to be the, the balance of the board here to have a conversation in committee, I'm a compromiser, so I'm, I'm willing to do that, Alderwoman. So I guess I can amend my motion to send the, the mayor's appointments to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission to a committee.
Probably legislation and rules.
Perfect, to legislation.
If that is all right with the Alderman from the fifth.
Sorry, Joe.
Well, I, I need to remove my second before he removes his motion first.
That's true, yes, good catch.
Okay, at that point, I will remove my second to the motion for this appointment. Okay, you don't plan, you wanna have meetings over the summer, if I, I'm sorry, Madam President, may I inquire the Alderman from the second?
Yes, you may inquire the Alderman, or Alderman from the second, will you yield to questioning from the Alderman from the fifth?
I will.
You may proceed.
Alderman from the second, are you willing to meet during the summer to get this over with?
Sure, absolutely, whatever, whatever works for your schedule, Mr. Chair.
Three in the morning after I close the bar will work. All right, thank you. No further questions.
Okay, just a point of order here, do I need to amend my motion now, now that the second's?
Make, make the motion to send to committee, we need a second.
I move, I move that we send the mayor's appointments to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission to the Legislative Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the second, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we moved the mayor's appointments to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission to the Legislation and Rules Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized on the suspension of the rules for the introduction of an additional member to the Zoological Park District Commission.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to suspend the rules in order to reappoint Vince Bennett to the Zoological Park District.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderman from the second, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introduce, introducing the mayor's appointment to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Norrion.
Aye.
Alderman Vommer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Valesquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Saye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Fourteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the ninth to introduce the mayor's appointment to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission, Alderman from the ninth, you may proceed.
Thank you, at this time, I move to move the nomination of Vince Bennett to the Zoological Park District to the Legislation and Rules Committee for vetting.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we send the mayor's appointment to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission to the Legislation and Rules Commission, our committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Alderwoman from the sixth.
I would like to move to place front, to place Board Bill seventy-one from third read to the, is this the right time to do that?
This is not the right time, when we, when we get to, before third reading, I'll recognize you to make that motion. Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of our informal calendar, seeing none, we'll dispense with line items nine, ten, and eleven. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill number eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance approving section two point zero eight point zero one zero of the city's code, which provides for the nomination of candidates for the offices of Mayor, Comptroller, President of the Board of Aldermen, and the Aldermen at primary elections, and lo thereof enacts a new section two point zero eight point zero one zero to eliminate the primary requirement where two or fewer candidates file declarations of intent pursuant to section two point zero eight point zero five zero. Or if two or more candidates file declarations of intent and a candidate or candidates withdraw pursuant to two point zero eight point four zero zero, leaving two or fewer candidates, in which cases, the two candidates or candidates shall advance to the general election. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Legislation and Rules Board Bill eighty-seven, that is the extent to reference of committee.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item fourteen, special report of committees.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item fifteen, Board Bills for Perfection Consent.
Board Bill number sixty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three for the forty, for the forty-nine twenty-three through forty-nine forty-nine, Dr. Martin Luther King Drive area in the city of St. Louis. Board Bill number seventy-two, sponsored by Alderman Browning and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three for the forty-two twenty-one through forty-two twenty-seven Park, Forest Park Avenue area in the city of St. Louis. Board Bill number seventy-five, sponsored by Alderman Cohn and Alderwoman Saye and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three for the Marquette Park Scatters, Scatters Sites area in the city of St. Louis.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the Board Bills for the Perfection Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Board Bills for Perfection Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the second, or seventh, that we adopt the Board Bills for the Perfection Consent Calendar, any discussion? that we adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? We have fourteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion for the adoption of the perfection consent calendar. Board Bills for Perfection.
Board Bill number thirty, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the Cary Avenue, Bullwood Avenue, Adelaide Avenue, and North Third Street redevelopment area.
Alderwoman from the twelfth, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill thirty-one.
Madam President and members of the board, I request that we put Board Bill thirty on the informal calendar. The alderwoman from the seventh had asked for some things that I have not received, and I had told her if I didn't get it uh, the information to her, that I would put it on the informal calendar until we could get her satisfied as what she needed.
Madam Clerk, please place the bill on the informal calendar.
So noted.
Uh, report of engrossment.
Board Bill twenty-nine, committee sub as amended, Board Bill seventy-one, and Board Bill eighty-two floor sub.
This time, I'll recognize Alderwoman from the sixth on the motion that she was about to make previously.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to uh, move Board Bill seventy-one from third read to the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Uh, third reading and final passage of Board Bills consent.
Board Bill number twenty-nine, committee sub as amended and Board Bill eighty-two floor sub.
Alderman, uh, from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt and finally pass, uh, the Board Bills on the third reading final.
Point of order?
Yeah.
I believe the clerk said um, or built, or are we on consent? Because eighty-two is on regular.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure we're voting on the right stuff. Yeah, thank you.
Board Bill twenty-nine, committee sub as amended.
All right. Uh, Alderman from the tenth, or fourteenth, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, third read and finally pass the Board Bills on the consent calendar.
Been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, second and by the alderwoman from the eighth, that we third read and finally pass uh, the bills on the consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Okay, got you. Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Fourteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderman from the fourteenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of Board Bills.
Board Bill eighty-two floor sub, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, President Green, Alderwoman Schweitzer, and Alderwoman Sanyay. An ordinance requiring officers of the city of St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department to identify themselves as specified therein with when requesting that a person consent to a search of their person, property, vehicle, or home home when the stretch, when the search is not pursuant to a warrant or exception to warrant requirements under applicable law.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you're recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill eighty-two floor substitute.
Thank you, uh, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, is this where I can speak on it? Should I make the motion first?
Make the motion and then.
Okay. I'd like to, uh, make the motion to third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-two floor substitute.
Second.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, second and by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-two floor substitute. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um, think, I want to thank all, uh, my members uh, that have been in conversation with Board Bill eighty-two floor substitute. Um, two key components that we've already talked about last week that Board Bill eighty-two floor substitute would do. Uh, we had to get to a floor substitute version just to make sure that we clean up the language. So I want to give, uh, kind of a huge shout out to, um, the President's Office, Janika, for helping me out with this. Uh, several alderpeople such as Alderwoman Kara Spencer, Alderman Bretton Ryan, um, concerns from other alderpeople that have been coming to the table to try to figure out how do we also pass a bill that will give our citizens, uh, as we say, a right to know, a right to know around their consent searches. And when those consent searches happening, uh, happening, making sure that individuals, uh, get business cards with police name, badge, information, and also the COB on the backside. Uh, I know there were some concerns to slow this bill down, which, uh, I think was beneficial for more compromise, uh, with myself, the police department, uh, the mayor's office, and, um, also again with Janika, who's been really helping out in the President's office. So, um, I appreciate all the conversations we had last week, appreciate the individuals who also add on as a co-sponsor. I think this is a huge step of just ensuring that people know their rights. Um, sometimes they don't actually know what their rights are. Uh, and when it comes to consent searches, I think it's, uh, critical that people know they have the ability not to allow that search to happen. Uh, and with that, I close, Madam President.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, it's been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, second and by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-two floor substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
No.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Oh.
Alderwoman Velazquez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderman Ty, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Tyus?
Oh, you're fired.
Alderwoman Tyus? You're muted.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Alderwoman Pam Boyd?
Abstain.
Alderman Aldridge?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Eleven aye votes, two no votes, one abstain.
By your vote, you've sustained the motion from the alderman from the fourteenth and third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Reported the finally passed and signed by the President.
Board Bill number twenty-nine, committee sub as amended, and Board Bill number eighty-two floor sub.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions and reference to committees.
Resolution number fifty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderman Aldridge, and Alderwoman Velazquez. The board stands in solidarity with the I B E W.
Alderwoman from the seventh, you are recognized on resolution number fifty-six.
Thank you, Madam President and member, members of the board. Um, I would like, like to make a motion to, uh, I would like to move, move this unanimously.
Do you like to request unanimous consent?
Oh, yes. Sorry, yes, I would like to request unanimous consent.
Objection.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent. Alderwoman, uh, from the seventh, would you like to suspend the rules, uh, for purposes of moving it today or send it to committee?
Um, I would like to suspend the rules. Um, and when we get to discussion, I can kind of explain more about, I'd like to suspend the rules.
Right. There's been a motion made by the alderwoman from the seventh to suspend the rules for the purposes of, uh, adopting resolution number fifty-six today. Is there a second?
Point of order, Madam President.
Uh, Alderman from the third.
I, there is, uh, suspension of the rules is no longer a debatable motion, so there won't be any discussion on it.
Correct, but I need a second on it.
Second.
Is what I was asking for.
Second.
No, I know, but the alderwoman from the seventh said that she wanted to make remarks during the discussion on suspension of the rules.
Okay, I.
I said later on, when we get to discussion, I can explain.
Oh, okay. All right, just clarifying. Um, it's been seconded already.
Okay, it's been moved by the alderwoman from the seventh, second and by the alderman from the fourteenth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of adopting, uh, resolution number fifty-six today. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Boyd?
No.
Twelve aye votes, two no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderwoman from the seventh, uh, to, uh, on regi- resolution number fifty-six. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like, uh, make a mo- make a motion to adopt resolution fifty-six.
Second.
Been moved by the alderwoman from the seventh, second and by the alderman from the ninth, that we adopt resolution number fifty-six. Uh, Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um, I I know many of us are very familiar with the conversations that have been going on between I B E W and, um, K S D, K S D K. I've had many conversations with members and their board members, and I know many of those members live in our, live in our communities, and we have the honor of representing them. Um, I've, I've had some conversations too. I know sometimes, you know, I want to be clear that this is just about making sure that it's clear that we stand with our workers and we support their rights. Um, as it says in the resolution, they've been in contract negotiations, um, since January, and there, an agreement hadn't been reached, so they've been, you know, they've been working without an actual contract or increased wages. I want to say that and then also give the update that, you know, today I spoke with an executive board member of I B E W, and it does look like they are, they have come to an agreement, um, and they are just working on getting the, the final polishes. I literally got that call maybe five minutes before we started our, our board meeting today. So, um, I just, I want to give, that's kind of what I want to give caveat to, is this resolution is about saying that we, we stand with the workers of I B W, that we want them to be able to come to an agreement, and we recognize the importance of, of supporting the, those folks. Um, and it's really saying that we support them reaching that, but also put the caveat out that it does look like they, they have, they are in the final stages of reaching an agreement that works for both sides as called for in the resolution.
Uh, Alderman from the fourth.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I want to, uh, thank the alderwoman from the seventh, uh, for her work on this. I know that several of us have, um, you know, heated the calls of local four and not, not given exclusive interviews, things of that nature during the pendency of this labor dispute. I think it's important that we do stand with uh, the men and women, uh, in organized labor. I don't think that's any surprise coming from me to, uh, members of this board. Um, and I would request to be added as a co-sponsor, and, uh, thank you again, Alderman, Alderwoman from the seventh for your work on this.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, and if you would add me as a co-sponsor as well, I would appreciate it.
So noted.
Uh, Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Uh, would the alderwoman from the seven take questions?
Uh, Alderwoman from the seventh, would you take questions from the alderwoman from the thirteen?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. So, uh, first and foremost, I am a strong supporter of I B E W, but I looked in the resolution and it had in there about, uh, nine union people, so where are they at on that? Port of resolution.
So, um, the concern and part of what they're working for, the, you know, the greater concern that I B W workers have is that, uh, K S D would attempt, would attempt to get, you know, labor and workers that are not signed up with the union. So the language in the bill is just, you know, basically us saying that we strongly encourage them to keep a union base and to work with them. But they are, um, it looks like they're going to come to an agreement and keep it with union work and be able to work out something that works with both sides. So I, I think they're at a good place with it now. It's not final. They're, you know, it's not solidified on paper, but I did talk to the executive board members that said, everything looks good. They're just in the final stages of tidying up their agreement.
And so I guess my question is, uh, in regards to the media. So, in that, in the resolution, it had boycott K S D K. So if they have come to an agreement, why are we still pushing forward on the resolution for boycott?
So they just, they just came, that they're just in the final stages of coming to the agreement and they asked for us and members of the community while they were in, in negotiations and are, you know, technically still innocent, the agreement is not official, was that consumers don't watch the channel and, uh, others don't do interviews with them in, in any format, which would have been the form of, of boycott and just, you know, not supporting that entity to make sure that we show that, you know, hey, we're not going to support you if you're not standing with workers. Um, the resolution is still going to go through, um, because they haven't officially had that yet, and they kind of just got to the final stages of it. And for me, I think the resolution is a, is a good idea because we need to, you know, maintain the heat up, and I think it's a great look for us as a board of aldermen to make it clear of, of where we stand and, and where we land. And then when they reach an agreement, which it looks like they are, and that's great, I think that's, that's what we want. Um, that's what the resolution encourages. Um, then it's just, you know, something there to say, you know, hey, we did stand with them, and it does encourage it, and it helps us to kind of set a precedent, I think, for you know, all, all folks in the city to know, like, hey, as a city, we expect you to, we expect, we want to encourage unions, and we expect folks to, to come to those agreements and to be clear on where we stand in it.
So when you say they contacted, uh, the Board of Aldermen, who exactly did they contact? Because I haven't heard anything from anybody from that union.
Um, well, I know I've had several conversations with them. I know, um, I, I can't name it specific since it is their outreach, and I do think they reached out to us, uh, individually, but, um, they've been very clear. I, I think I saw email actually that they sent out to all of us on the, on the Board of Aldermen to tell us about, uh, what was going on and, and what they were hoping we could do in support of it. Um, I think it went to the full Board of Aldermen. I think all of us were, were in the email sent to us. But outside of the initial email, I know they were just asking, hey, this is how we're looking for support. How can you do that? Okay, thank you.
Uh, Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, members of the board, um, the reason I, uh, oppose unanimous consent, we've, uh, supported K S D K, uh, workers in the past. I don't like the language that talks about turn off K S D K, the news as it applies to us, to individuals. Uh, that's okay. Um, freedom of the press is something that I take very seriously because if I didn't, I got at least one paper in the city of St. Louis that lies all the time. I would be asking for a boycott just because they're big liars, but I don't because they have a right, they have a freedom of the press, and if it's bad enough, you sue. So, um, for consumers and other people, I support it. I support all that part of this resolution. I do not support that we add in there that they have asked them to turn off K S D K because that puts a stamp of approval from the legislative body about boycott. Um, and, um, I don't do that. I don't even do that with people who lie to me. If they come and ask me. Um, and, um, I don't do that. I don't even do that with people who lie to me. If they come and ask me, I lie on me, they come and ask me for an interview, I will sit down with them, okay, and I will talk to them, and I believe that is very important, that all parts of the press have access to elected officials. And so that is why I will not be supporting this resolution. I support everything else in it except for, and I even support that they have called for boycott. I do not support, uh, the legislative body putting their stamp of approval on a boycott for, um, members of the press, and that is why. So, um, in fact, I won't be opposing it. What I will be doing is voting present for that reason, because I don't think that belongs in it. I think it's stands, if we had not put that in there, um, and just say we support what they're doing. I absolutely do. I, I was born into a union family. Um, in fact, if you sit at our table during holidays, there's a few people who are not in union. And it's very hard to be one of those people who are in management with my family, which is large and very, very pro-union. But again, I don't think the legislative body should be putting a stamp on turning off K S D K or boycotting them. But we can say we support the I B E W members and their right to have, um, uh, union, uh, workers and their right to fight, except for a limited, uh, limited, very limited, uh, ability to not have to have, and I want to use the word that they use out, non-union workers, but I grew up at a time when there was another word for it, but I don't agree with uh, pushing for non-union workers. So I will be voting, uh, present, not because I don't support the overall large intent, but I don't support, uh, legislative bodies asking for a boycott of any, um, media at all. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the seventh, you're recognized to close.
In closing, you know, um, I, I know that many of us receive a lot of support and have great relationships with, with all sorts of unions throughout our community. I know that many of these conversations have already kind of paid out publicly with lots of media coverage. Um, I do want to thank the members of I B W and, you know, all of our media workers and all of our workers in our city for doing the hard work that they do. And I want to make sure that every time that we can and in all the ways that we can, that we go on record, you know, as a legislative body to make it clear that that's our expectation and that that is the type of city that we want to build. Um, under capitalism, there's not many protections, but unions are a great protection, and they allow people to get the healthcare that they need, to have the working conditions that they need, and to be treated in the quality in which they deserve. Um, I am happy to hear that they are coming to an agreement. It looks like they have, they have reached that resolution, but I'm also very happy to be a part of a board that I hope today takes a vote to just send another message out as far as where we stand and where our solidarity is and what our expectations and hopes are.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we, uh, adopt resolution number fifty-six.
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
Would you think?
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Eleven aye votes, three present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the seventh on the adoption of resolution number fifty-six. Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
We have none.
You can dispense with line item twenty-one. Uh, courtesy resolutions.
Resolution number fifty-one sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, honoring Derek Walker.
Oh, uh, Madam Clerk, you don't need to read them all. I was about to recognize the Alderman from the fourteenth. Okay, Alderman from the fourteenth, you're recognized in the motion to adopt the courtesy resolution calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the courtesy resolution calendar.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we adopt the courtesy resolutions calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item twenty-three, announcements.
Monday, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, Special Committee on Long-Term Healthcare will meet via webinar at three P M.
There any further announcements? Any further announcements? Uh, Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, I know this is our last meeting before we go to summer break, and, uh, during that break, we do have some events coming up, so I just want to get it out there early in the, uh, fourteenth ward. On August ninth, uh, myself and Alderwoman, um, Kara Spencer will be holding our second, uh, kind of joint downtown, uh, town hall at the Central Library, uh, from five-thirty to seven P M. It will be in the auditorium. We would love for you guys to come. And then the following week, uh, August sixteenth, uh, I will be having, uh, my first kind of fourteenth ward meeting outside of just the downtown area, which will be at the Firehouse on North Jefferson at fourteen-twenty-one, uh, North Jefferson, uh, from five-thirty to seven. Uh, so far I have confirmed, uh, the chief is coming, Personnel Director, and hopefully we'll have, uh, Madam President also gracing us with her presence at that meeting. Uh, and those are the two announcements that I have.
Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you so much. On that same vein, uh, the Alderman from the third and I are hosting our second town hall at the Crandlet Library, uh, on September ninth at noon, and we hope to see folks there. I hope everyone has a great summer.
Any further announcements? Uh, Alderwoman from the seventh.
I just, uh, wanted to thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just wanted to give like a resounding thank you to the seventh ward. We had our town hall yesterday. Um, I have learned that I cannot count R S V Ps as the amount of people who will come, because there's always at least ten, twenty more people that are R S V P, but those are the problems that we want to have. Um, we had a lot of great, robust discussion. I, I want to thank, um, Jessica Gershman from Bi-State for coming out and talking about the North and South expansion. I want to thank our police officer liaisons and captains who came out and gave us some updates on some crime statistics and just really make sure that I thank the seventh ward for continuing to show up. Community doesn't build itself, but this is what it looks like. Um, and I'm just so excited. And thank the International Institute for hosting us. The venue was set up great. Um, they were very accommodating for the extra folks that we have. I think there was like over sixty people who attended, so, um, I just want to make sure that I'm like saying thank you for that and, um, that I look forward to much of that work coming up.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion to excuse the Alderwoman, uh, from the tenth ward, uh, Clark Hubbard.
Second.
Been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we excuse the Alderwoman from the tenth for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the fourteenth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
I like, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Aldermen adjourn until Friday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adjourn until Friday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Have a healthy and safe and happy summer recess.